Thank you for the hint. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Councilwoman. I'm the Economic Development Manager. I would provide an update on the September Nights on B Street event series and seek council feedback at the end of my presentation. After my presentation, Kathy Kleimbahn, Assistant City Manager, will share information on changes to the special events guidelines and discuss potential formation of a special events visioning committee. The September Nights on B was a pilot event series that was created in part to celebrate the city's 125th anniversary. The event was held on three consecutive Thursday nights on the 5th, 12th, and 19th of September. The city kicked off the event series with satirical reenactment of the first city council meeting with some department heads assistants. The stage was located on B Street between Second and Third Avenue, adjacent to the Cinema Plaza, and the event included pop-up dining, live music each week, dance instruction, dancing, trivia time, community booths, and a children's activities zone. The major sponsor was the Downtown San Mateo Association, and in-kind sponsors were the San Mateo Chamber of Commerce, Daily Journal, Recology, and the Motion Arts Dance Center. Staff estimates that there were 1,010 attendees that joined or passed through the event each night. The community booths in the Cinema Plaza were active, well-attended, and busy the entire night. The children's zone was energetic, filled with young children playing with oversized games and bouncing in inflatable jumpy house and obstacle course. The beer and wine booth was managed by the Chamber of Commerce, and it sold out all three nights despite increasing inventory. As a side note, the Chamber of Commerce was really appreciative of the opportunity to operate the booth. All the restaurants on the block were filled with bustling with activity, customers, and orders. The pop-up dining area was filled with takeout food from all the eateries over the downtown. Staff spoke to several of the businesses on the block after the event series and received positive feedback from the business community. On the last night of the event series, staff collected attendee feedback. We wanted to learn how attendees found out about the event, were they San Mateo residents or workers, and did they purchase food or drink, and what was the biggest draw for the event. Staff received more than 100 responses to the survey, and here are some of the highlights and takeaways. Word of mouth, social media, passing through, and seeing posters were the main ways attendees learned of the event series. Eighty-five percent of respondents either lived or worked in San Mateo. Ninety percent of respondents supported the downtown businesses by purchasing food and drinks at the event. And finally, live music was the biggest draw for the attendees. What we learned from the survey was that the event was a local attraction for residents and workers. Attendees supported many of the businesses downtown by buying food and drinks, and attendees enjoyed eating, drinking, while listening to live music in the downtown. The expenditures. The three-night event series cost approximately $120,000. Eighty percent of the expenses were for administration, venue creation, and entertainment. The city received approximately $26,750 in sponsorships. The net cost to the city was $95,000. There were also in-kind sponsorships from Recology, Motion Arts, and Daily Journal. In comparison, the Central Park Music Series is around $7,000 a night. September Nights on B is significantly more expensive than the music series because the event is set up and taken down every week. Most of the difference is related to transforming a street to event venue each night, street closures, equipment rentals, and labor. Since this is the first year the city hosted the event series, we have learned some lessons on how to cut costs. Thus, we believe we can trim the budget by 10 to 15K in future years. The event series successfully enlivened the downtown for all three nights. Staff would like council feedback on the following questions. Does council want to continue the event series? Any recommendations to format? And just note that to continue the event series would require increasing budget allocation for the special events.
So I think at this point, we'll maybe take a pause, maybe have a brief discussion about the September Nights event, and then we'll go into the second half where we talk more about the community special event committee.
Quick question. Can you go back to the pie chart?
Sure.
So how did you calculate the 37% for administration?
That was the producers' cost for the event. Producers, we had an event producer, their fee, plus overtime labor costs and police and public works.
And that was all in taking, that all comes together to create the 120?
Yeah.
Okay. And the venue creation, then, is what you rented? Actual materials rented? Chairs?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also the labor, some of the labor that's, there are labor related to, it's probably embedded in the setup of the booths.
Okay.
Does that cost include, like, your time and everybody else's?
No.
The only staff time included was overtime expenses. We didn't account for any of the actual salaried staff that participated.
Is it appropriate to think of if you guys' time would have been spent on some other activity, or was this time taken away from something else that's probably important?
It would, this was added on for this year's activity?
So for sure, especially considering myself and Jennifer, we probably would have allocated time to other projects or programs. I think the first year, I want to emphasize, took a lot more effort to even figure out what to do and how to do it. In future years, the amount of time that would take from salaried staff would be probably like 20% of what it took this year.
When you were talking with the businesses, I know that there was a lot of angst before, and then I heard that there was a lot of surprises and a lot of positive feedback. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Like, was it positive for them? Would they want this to come back? Or is it just like, oh, it wasn't as bad as we thought it was going to be, so?
I think the businesses on B Street between Second and Third definitely wanted to come back. You definitely heard that from the pizzeria, from B Street Station. I think, you know, some of the further out ones probably did not see a huge increase from it, and they were just glad that their business was not overall impacted negatively.
I would say that the impact really, not just the event block, but maybe businesses within a half a block in either direction of the event probably saw the most tangible benefit.
Yeah.
And people just didn't walk three, four blocks as many people to get their dinner.
One last question. So this being the first one, and it was just kind of hectic, and I think you guys did an amazing job putting it together. If this was a more regular event, do you think that we could have upped the sponsorships like big time, like maybe even? One of the things I was thinking of where we had the plaza in the back where that was kind of like our staging area for the birthday. But that could be like an area for a startup to show, be showing their latest thing or whatever. If they give us money to support it, they could kind of?
Yeah. I definitely think we can have increased sponsorships. I don't know if it'll be enough to cover the entire series.
I will say that having at least one event under our belt and being able to show people what it was and how many people attended, I think will help us get additional sponsorships. But again, it certainly wouldn't be fully cost-recovering.
I think special events, as Sheila has said to me in the past, is really about community building. So I would put it in that category versus could this be a net neutral in the budget for the city.
It is, wait a minute. It is true that when they had the general plan information booth that was behind the stage there, they had gotten more input in and around the community than they had never gotten before. So there's some intangibles as well, and whether somebody came downtown that one night, saw that it was exciting, and maybe patronized a business again, maybe not on that street, but so I think there are probably some intangibles, too. I recognize that you went all out for this, and you may not do as much rental next time or whatever it may be, but it was quite impressive. But I'm going to reserve comment. Do you have questions or comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think that there is room to improve the sponsorships. So in fact, I'm wondering, what in-kind sponsorship was it that Recology made?
There were 30 trash cans that were picked up.
Okay, so they brought in service 30 trash cans?
Yeah.
Okay. So their name was on them, so that was good.
I think we had budgeted $3,000 just for that each night.
Oh, so that was, there was?
There is some value in that.
Significant value there.
Yeah.
I'll see if I can get them to kick in more than that in the future. So all I need is some headway, so.
Excellent, excellent. It was a...
Yeah, and some other sponsors, too, that I have in mind. Other than that, I think it was great. I see the people really enjoyed it. I think it was well done, and I'm absolutely certain that the 37% admin will go down in the future. This was inventing the wheel.
Yeah.
More comments later. Let's go.
And the promotion could go down, too, as more word of mouth.
That's what we were thinking.
So we definitely, you know, there were some things we experimented it with. We wanted to get the word out as far and wide. So for example, we spent about $5,000 on bus ads. We wouldn't do that again. There were some iHeartRadio placements we probably wouldn't do again. So there's a, again, there's definitely things we would trim from our lessons learned. You can still see the bus ads.
It's all right. But no, I think a good time was, let me open up to public comment, if there's any public comment.
Nope.
Come on down.
I just, one question was, could it rotate, there's, could it rotate to different streets? Like, one Thursday it's B Street, one Thursday it's Ellsworth Street, one Thursday, like it just moves a little bit around downtown or something? That's the one thing I'm wondering and stuff. So it helps to cover more businesses over the long haul? That's just a general thing, but thank you.
Thanks, Drew. Any other public comment? So we'll bring it back to the council. I imagine that might get a little complicated, but is it possible so that other businesses would benefit?
I mean, it is possible. There are some advantages to that specific block, which is why we chose it, especially the ability to use the Cinema Plaza, which is just added real estate. Other blocks have some difficulties with, like, garage entrances. When you do, like, if you did Second or Third, a street that goes towards a freeway, there's a little bit more traffic diversion, but it's not impossible.
Just have to explore it a little further. Okay. So a council comment, and then we'll go to your other.
Kathy said she had more to present, or?
We're going to do the park and rec, I mean, the special events after that. So did you want to have any more comment? Go ahead.
Oh, comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was really impressed with the events. I was, I mean, like everybody, I was wondering what was going to happen, right? And they blew my expectations away. I love how you partnered with the chamber. I'd love to see the chamber get more involved with events like this. I know that they were very ecstatic and happy. And I would love to see this continue. The only, the only kind of, like, while we're here, like, trying to make a great event even better, I would wonder if perhaps having at least one of these on a Saturday or on a weekend night might be able to draw different types of people. And the only reason I say that is because I was really trying to get a lot of people there to go, and I was trying to word of mouth, because I thought it was going to be fun, and I wanted to have a group of friends that I usually hang out with on the weekends to go to this and check it out, and just with school, with work, getting it back from commutes, homework, all this stuff, just, I mean, all the excuses. And I know the excuses because I tried to drag my son there, too, and it was, I had to talk my wife into letting him do it because he had all this stuff. And we had a great time. It was perfect. But we might be able to make it even better if it was a Friday night. It'd be more, it would just be more of a party almost because there wouldn't be work or school the next day. So I'm sure that there might be. But, you know, I want to give, not only kudos to you, but I want to give kudos to our mayor because I know that this was something that she pushed pretty hard on, and look, the results, I think, was awesome, so.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
So my comments are that I would really like to see this go forward. It appeared that people really, truly enjoyed it. I know we had a special event for this, but I think we could try to find some kind of different entertainment for different ones, you know, some way to make each one unique somehow. That would be a great thing. I know that's not easy. It requires a lot of work and creativity, but I think that in order to keep it viable, there has to be some magnet, right? Some attractor. So that, maybe, I'm not sure what. Petting zoo? Comedy? To some people, the two are equal. And regarding the budget, I'd like to do everything we can to try and limit, you know, additional expenses because the city does have a kind of a budget issue going right now. So whatever we can get in sponsorships, I'm willing to help. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I concur. It sort of exceeded my expectations as well. I think there are intangibles with that sense of community that folks felt. There was, the dancing and the dance lessons was unbelievable, the level of, I mean, like you said, you couldn't find a spot on the dance floor to try to master some of these very unusual dances, so that was really neat. I thought staff was extremely professional in the way they handled it. I appreciate that if you did it again, the efforts would be streamlined, and I also appreciate the comments about finding some additional sponsorships or maybe moving to a Friday night. But it was, I mean, I think we were all kind of buoyed, both with respect to people that work in the city as well as our community at large. It was pretty neat. So job well done. You're very professional in all of it. We weren't half-baked about it, so I think that was important to giving it a send-off into its future consideration.
Oh, and you know what I think, excuse me, through the mayor. I think the people really liked the part where we did our little play, even though it was short, you know, and it was definitely a one-time kind of thing. Some small theater skits might be something to consider.
Right, you show.
So one idea which we may pull in for future years is maybe pulling in local performance troops, so kids' performances, a kids' dance troupe, or a little kids' theater thing. Some of it's a little bit challenging because it's the start of the school year, but it still may be possible.
Or community theater could promote one of its things by doing a song or two.
And that was exactly what my comment was going to be, is in that if we want to save costs, I think we need to pay for, like, the piano, the dueling pianos, I thought was, I loved them. I thought they were great. And I think we need to, you know, pay the musicians fairly when we get the top-tier talent. But before that, maybe instead of having, you know, nobody, like, well, people are setting up or just sitting around, there's a lot of musicians that would just love the chance to get up there and play. And whether it be like the School of Rock or different jazz bands at the high schools, like, they would be willing to play up on stage for, you know, pizza slice.
So I also want to give an appreciation for our Parks and Rec staff, especially Christine Peralta, for handling a lot of the entertainment work and Sheila lending her to us for that period of time. That was significant amount of work that Christine was vital for because Kathy and I do not have experience in entertainment.
Thank you, Christine. Yeah, you did a great job.
So I just wanted to make sure. And Public Works were also really great about working with the producers and getting everything set up. Everything kind of came together each night, which is not an easy feat.
It got stronger each night. It was?
Yes, we did tighten it up each night, too, which is why I'm always a little bit concerned that if we move a street, every street's a little bit different. Each of our street widths are different, number of businesses on each of the street is different. So we go back to discovering what each block would be if we decided to change our location.
And I did want to make a little bit of comment of that, and I understand where Drew is coming from, and I understood, and I got that feedback from other places and from businesses. But I do think that, you know, like in Redwood City, they have a Courthouse Square. They don't move, they don't move it around because that is kind of, and that's just a pretty picturesque part of downtown with the twinkle lights with, I mean, when Diane was talking about the intangibles, I mean, look at the picture we have of downtown. Like, I don't think we've had any pictures like that. Like, I remember seeing something of the Fourth of July in 1976 where it was really cool. But this, that night shot, I mean, that's like something that could be put on brochures and help the chamber and help the downtown association. So I'm kind of like, well, this is, this works. Like, if we want to involve other businesses, like, maybe we could, like, think creatively to get people to get food from other places, like specials, or like, they get a stand or?
We did try to have table numbers and have restaurants, like, deliver into the downtown, and the restaurants just were not prepared, and I think they didn't know what the event really was.
Yeah.
So we have that ready for next year if we want to do a bigger push and see if the surrounding restaurants would say, like, oh, if you just hire extra personnel, they can deliver the food and have that understanding a little bit better, but?
Or they could open up the booths like they do at the Concert in the Park, some mirror in, like, in the plaza or somewhere. Just like, give them a chance if they want to, and we don't charge them for it because they're downtown, or something like that, just to increase, it helps the visitors there, but it also helps those businesses, and it can be kind of like, more activate that space a little bit more than it was last time, too.
Any other comments? I like them all. Great. So did you want to move on to the event committee?
Sure.
Suggestions?
Okay. So at the last council meeting, when we came forward, sorry, to talk about this event, we also talked a little bit about our special events committee. And at that time, there was a recommendation from council, not only to look at the process of how events were approved, but also to possibly look at forming a sort of parallel committee to help out with events. So on the staff level, our special events team has been meeting and really talking about ways that we can improve our process. And one idea that we plan to execute on is we're going to develop pre-approved traffic plans. So whenever a street is closed off, you need to have a traffic plan, and this typically has to be professionally done. It can cost up to $1,500. But if we can have pre-approved plans for key streets that are typically closed in our downtown or in other parts of the city, then that would save the time and expense any applicant coming in, and we could just pull whatever we need off the shelf and say, you want to do an event on this street? Here's what you need to do. So I think that'll really, that's one of the most stressful parts of the process for a lot of our applicants, and I think that'll really ease the process. In addition, there has been some concern from applicants. We don't often issue the final approval letters to a couple of weeks before the event, and so we're looking at a process to create sort of a conditional approval process, saying, we're going to give you some specifications you need to follow, but let you know that your event's going to be able to move forward much earlier in the process so that they can be comfortable marketing and moving forward with their event planning. We're also looking to update our event application and guide to make it a little bit more clear and more understandable. So we will also continue just to look at ways to improve the process as events come forward and we sort of recognize what may be causing issues or roadblocks for events. And then about the special event visioning committee, I will say we have not taken any steps yet to start this because we were very focused on running the September events, but it was mentioned by council that there's sort of an interest in pulling in some stakeholders and possibly council members to really talk about what kind of events are held in the town, what might be missing, how to improve the process also. So we are tonight maybe looking for some further council direction, some things, like, do you want this to be a committee so it meets ongoing, or maybe a task force that's more short-term with, like, you know, meets until they come up with recommendations and then disbands? What kind of members do you want us to invite? And if you have any further direction on the mission or what you want this group to accomplish.
Was the previous slide just what staff is doing?
That's kind of the, so is it safe to say, like, the first committee, you're, that's like the how, and then this would be if, depending on how it shapes out, would be more like the what?
Exactly.
All right. Any questions? I don't have any questions.
On this slide, are we working with representatives from the police department? The only reason I ask is because I know some events have led to some issues, concerns, and the police have had to intervene at some things. So are we asking for their input?
So they, currently, police do serve on the staff-level
Okay.
...committee, but they can also be invited to serve on the visioning committee. I know that they do often have opinions about alcohol and those type of event components.
Yeah, right. Okay, that's good.
And we'll open up to public comment?
No speaker slips.
I just want to say I see this as a great positive thing. I think wider group of representatives from the community can get involved in trying to do something fun.
Creating the what? Yeah, I mean, I don't know what you're inclined, but my inclination is maybe a task force to kind of come up with, to try to do certain events, you know, like, come up with a list and let's see how we execute them and that kind of thing, but I'm not married to that. I don't know, what are your thoughts? Would you like an ongoing committee or just a task force?
I think a good place to start is to think about, like, what are the, what would be the goals of this, and then figure out how would we best accomplish those goals? What form of committee would best accomplish those goals? And for me, these were, these were what I would propose to be the goals of this task force or committee or whatever it is. And one is to get the community involved and kind of get rid of the notion that there are one or two gatekeepers somewhere in staff that decide everything we do, but make it more of a transparent process. That's number one. Number two is provide more accountability for unsuccessful events and try to, try to either make them better or discontinue them or something. But just some, like, where we have a group of non, the people that don't have a stake in whether or not, they're just looking at it objectively and saying, you know, this probably is not getting the bang for the buck that we wanted. Ensure a central planning organization where that can ensure equity and coverage, both geographically and demographically. So to be able to look at everything and say, you know, are we hitting all parts of San Mateo? Are we reaching this demographic and that demographic? Because at least it appears to me now, it's kind of more at the department level and really the departments, there's no one uber organization that's looking to make sure that all those things are happening, if that is indeed a goal. And lastly, well, not lastly, it's, this is get more people involved in this, more stakeholders in the community who care passionately, passionately about events. And that gets more volunteers, if we need volunteers, and it helps, it could help serve as having more liaisons within the community that bring down advertising budgets to almost zero. If we had 40% that last, that last, these last events and really, you know, that was the first one, so how could we have 40%? We could get that up to almost 100% if you had a group of passionate people that go out and are trying to do this. And they can be, they would be, serve as the liaisons to, you know, the neighborhood associations, the labor organizations, the chamber, and make sure that anybody who wants to be involved and provide their input have a forum to do that. So those were the goals of, that I thought that, I don't know how the best to do that yet, but that's kind of what the goals I would propose.
Well, some of the events are department-driven, right? And so are you envisioning that ones that are already department-driven would be kind of overseen by this committee/tax force to see how successful they are, and then maybe there's some give and take with doing other events, or what?
There might be, there might be two components of this, as I'm hearing. And one might be the initial, let's try to, like, to straighten everything up and clean everything out. And I'll give, and I used this example before, but the bike rodeo is a perfect example. It's so much effort and heart when it goes into that each year, and I've gone to it the last four years. I really like it. My son really likes it. But it is, it's not that well-attended. And so if our goal is to prevent bike safety and things like that, could we, can we, if we were looking as a whole, could we maybe add it as an add-on to a Concert in the Park or something? Or do we have one central one or just something to try to help it? But doing the same thing four years in a row where only 10 kids shows up, that, I don't know who's looking out for that to make sure that that's a good use of our time and resources. So maybe the first is, when we got that whole list of all the events we do, I don't know about other members on the council, but I was like, wow, I had no idea we did all this stuff. And I mean, it was like, wow. And it would be And it would be great to kind of just go over each thing and kind of look at how it was and like, or look at how everything is doing and come up with a plan. Are we covering all parts of San Mateo? Are we getting seniors involved? Are we getting kids involved? Are we getting downtown business involved? I don't know, whatever they are. And maybe, so that's, maybe that's one, the phase one. And then phase two would be the ongoing efforts to make, to help make what we're doing successful or something like that. So maybe there's a heavy lifting task force, and then maybe that task force figures out if we need it ongoing or not.
So just start with the list events as they exist now and review those first, and then either revise them and/or add other things and take out certain things. Is that right?
Yeah, well, like, how do we get the neighborhood associations involved? How do we get the nonprofits we have? How do we get labor involved?
That would be presumably criteria by which you evaluate these different events.
Right, right, right.
So the committee slash task force, whatever you want to call it, would take a list, look at the events as we start with them, develop some criteria as to determining how successful they are, whether they, like you said, demographically, geographically, where are they firing on all cylinders and where they're not? And they'll determine what those cylinders are, and then it may take things out, may amalgamate two together, like you were suggesting. So that might, I don't know, that might be then task force-oriented, and then the committee ultimately could be formulated thereafter to do the follow-up, to make sure...
Maybe one of the tasks of the task force is to figure out what ongoing processes need to happen, and how do we get other stakeholders involved? What is that mechanism? And how do we, like, if a member of the public has an idea for something, what, how do they, how do they, like, propose it? Like, is there a forum? It would be great to have even part of the task force or once a year or biannual thing where just, we get input, like, what do you think? Because we get, everybody throws out different ideas, like, whether it's cultural things or, like, I remember when I was looking at the cultural things, I'm like, so we have this cultural thing, but we don't have X, Y, and Z, like, and, yeah. So maybe, to get back on track, maybe it is part of the task force's job is to figure out, it's like, how do we get more people involved, and then how, and then what does that look like moving forward?
And as far as populating, what are you thinking?
Well, I, number one, I just heard a whole world of really good and interesting ideas, and so I nominate Eric for chair for the committee. But beside that, I'm really encouraged to hear all these different ideas, and I know that we should look at aligning events with groups, like you mentioned labor. Well, they'd be happy to participate, I think, in a Labor Day parade, right? Or some kind of a Labor Day event, somewhere, some park, something, right, in the city? And, because I know this year, they went to Oakland for a Labor Day event. So it'd be good to have something on this side of the bay that I think more people... And then also, I think some of this could be streamlined, because a lot of the same steps need to be gone over, over and over again, and they may have different people working on them. So we should actually work up some sheets that show, you know, different steps with contacts, what you have to do to actually get an event going, who you have to talk to, right? And aside from that, I mean, you laid out the whole thing, seniors, kids. We should look at other events that have been held here. I know that for a while, we had Kirill Groom did a, what was it? Parks Alive, Streets Alive, or the other way around? And part of the streets were blocked off, and there were bicycle rides, and there were other things going on. It might actually be able to be expanded on if we look at and think about it. More people are interested now in riding bikes, right? There's a much larger contingency of folks, and they're watching eagerly to see how our Bike Master Plan works out, right? I've seen discussion about it. So I think that if we did some good outreach there, we would find people interested in working on that and help.
And in the bike tour, I don't know if you're planning on doing that again, but that was really cool, and that could be a piggyback thing where you have a rodeo at the park associated with it. Adults maybe go around, and the kids are, you know, there's just so many things. And like Rick said, times are changing, and the way we're thinking about things are changing. We need to make sure that our events are kind of keeping up with it, and...
What I might suggest with respect to populating, if we could, if what you could bring back is maybe models of how other cities might have done an event or a committee or a task force or whatever, so then we can just take a look at it. Was it comprised of, you know, three seniors, three kids, three parents, and two council members? I mean, I don't know. I'm just wondering how it might have been done elsewhere, rather than us reinventing the wheel. We could come, and perhaps there's criteria that's already in use somewhere else. I mean, I can Google it if you want. I'm kidding. What do you got to say, Drew? Not that Drew, this Drew.
We can, we can reach out to some of our neighboring cities and see what they've done, especially those that do a lot more events or do other types of events, and find out how they're engaging their community, how they're measuring success of their events, and see what we can come back with in terms of a task force composition.
Yeah, just a model. It gives something to kind of choose from, and then we can go from there as far as what we'll task them with. Got a good start. You need anything else? Good. Okay, well, thank you all, and thank you for your efforts on B Street, including you, Christine Peralta. All right, we'll adjourn.
Good timing, Joe.